Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to elect a chair. Do I have a nomination?
Do the commissioners have to do this nomination or can anyone from the board?
Anyone can do any. You three can nominate, any of us?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ken.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Would you be willing to serve as chair?
Yes, I could.
Any further comment? Call for the question.
We don't need a roll call, do we?
Oh, we don't. Sorry.
No, do we need a roll call?
Mr. Gold.
Hi.
Commissioner Boyce.
Yes.
Commissioner Pash.
Aight.
Budget Committee Member Alcorn.
Yes.
Budget Committee Member Duque.
Yes.
Budget Committee Member Toad.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Motion carried unanimously.
I get to shut up. It's all yours. Your meeting, sir.
We'll support you, sir.
The agenda's in the front cover of your book there.
Thank you.
And we have the audience member.
You have to put your.
Like to make a comment.
Oh, you need to get my.
You have to put your mic on.
One.
Is it on?
Yes, it is.
I think so.
So, next item is approved minutes for January 30th.
Vice Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Did I miss that?
I'm looking at agenda. It says elect committee chair and then it moves into approved minutes. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I missed that too.
You're right. It's not on there.
I think we usually do have a vice chair, so we should probably.
Yeah, we usually just go ahead and.
Mr. Chair, I'll nominate, uh, Mr. Alcorn for the vice chair.
You'd be willing to serve as vice chair?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further comment? Oh, this is you.
I'm, I'm good with it. We have a.
Call for the question.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Boyce.
Yes.
Commissioner Pash.
Aight.
Budget Committee Member Alcorn.
Yes.
Budget Committee Member Toad.
Yes.
Budget Committee Chair Duque.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay.
My apologies. I was, I was addressing the wrong chair there.
Lot of chairs around here.
Yeah.
Next item is to approve the minutes of the January 30th, 2019 budget committee meeting.
I move that we approve the January 30th minutes for the budget committee.
Second budget committee chair Duque.
All approved. Any further discussion?
Um, I'd like to point out that we did this morning change the signers, um, for those minutes as the current committee members. So, the sign off on this would be the current committee.
Okay.
So, I'm understanding they, they don't have a vote in this.
They do have a vote in it. They, the current committee actually approves and assigns minutes, even if they were not there at the time of the meeting.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have had an opportunity to read through them. I don't have any other issues. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Boyce.
Yes.
Commissioner Pash.
Aight.
Budget Committee Member Alcorn.
Yes.
Budget Committee Member Toad.
Yes.
Budget Committee Chair Duque.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is a budget message from Louise Calstrom, the county accountant.
Um, there's, uh, the first tab in your book is the budget message. If you want to turn back to follow along. Budget message for Curry County, Oregon fiscal year 2019, 2020 to Curry County residents, budget committee members, and county commissioners. The total Curry County proposed budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 is $104,860,226, which includes $18,440,906 that is not appropriated to be expended this fiscal year. There are numerous transfers budgeted to consolidate funds and those transfers total $36,000, $36,919,000. The 2019, 2020 proposed budget net of those fund consolidation transfers is $67,941,226 and the 2018, 2019 final budget totaled $59,017, $17,003. The general fund proposed budget uses $1,184,081 of road capital improvement funds to fund the sheriff county road patrol, including addition of two patrol deputies with vehicles and equipment and two jail deputies. The use of the road capital improvement fund is allowed under Oregon State Senate Bill SB 496. Curry, or county budget changes, the general fund Curry County proposed budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 is $10,776,394 compared to the 2018, 2019 general fund final budget, which totaled $8,084,042. The major changes in the general fund proposed budgets are as follows. The PERS rate increase, um, personnel services are 62% of the general fund budget. Union negotiated compensation increases for Teamsters 223 and SEIU and nonrepresented employees' compensation increases. Adding four positions to the sheriff's department. Increase and reorganize staff in the assessor's office for the pilot program. Reorganize community development, um, planning department. The general fund support to other funds. The budget document, the budget document is an operations guide, a financial plan, as well as a statement of significant policies and changes. It represents the plan of action that Curry County will take in addressing its current needs and in planning for the future. Union negotiations. Teamsters 223 Sheriff's Department Union contract expires June 30th, 2019 and is currently in negotiations. The SEIU Union contract expires June 30th, 2020 with an economic reopener for 2019, 2020, which is currently in negotiations. Teamster 206 for the road department was established at the end of the 2017, 2018 year and a union contract is currently in negotiations. Summary, the county is mandated to provide certain services and will do so as funding allows. The county board of commissioners and staff remain dedicated to providing the best possible service to its residents. They ask for the continued involvement of its citizens in the county committees, boards, and events. Respectfully, Louise Calstrom, budget officer.
Thank you. And could you please just continue in item number five, which is the overview of the budget document and local budget law, please?
Okay, so, um, the budget document, um, right behind your cover page is the table of contents and, um, it lists the tab number that you can find these departments. The first, um, 12 is the general fund departments and then non-general funds are listed after that. So, the, um, I did hand out this this morning. Um, it's in your front pocket of your. There you go. And I just handed it to these commissioners. So, one of the, um, comments that we were getting on our audit was that we had more than the necessary amount of funds. Our auditor said we had a very unusual amount of funds. Um, we had 39 funds. And so, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to consolidate these funds so that we don't list so many different funds. Um, one of the things that I consolidated was we had grants that were under their own fund number and, uh, I think it was the year before last I established grant funds. So, I'm moving those grants and they're mostly the VOKA grants into the grant funds with the other federal or state, um, grants. Commissioners have their own fund. They're just one of the administrative services funds. And so, it's moved into the rest of the admin services funds with the VOC office, the accounting department, council, accounting, uh, the payroll, and the, uh, occupancy administration funds. The, um, there were several, um, internal service funds and those were the vehicle replacement funds, the general vehicle services fund, and also the building and construction fund. Those all have been combined under internal service funds. We had several, um, reserve funds. So, we have combined all the reserve funds into one, one fund, um, which is the payroll unemployment reserve, the PERS reserve, the road capital improvement fund reserve, the roadside improvement fund, which is a reserve for Titus Lane, um, the road equipment self-insurance fund, and the, uh, general equipment self-insurance fund. So, those are all under one place and they're all the internal service funds. Um, the bike and foot path has been, um, combined up with the road department. Now, these funds have not been closed to these other funds. They have just been grouped with that fund, just like the general fund has all of its departments. These funds will still remain separate but within the same fund number so that when, when it goes into the audit, those, those funds, there are not so many of them. So, we went from 39 funds down to 25.
Nice job.
Yeah, very good.
So, yeah, what you'll see is if you, um, I think if we turn to tab, which is one of them, like tab 14, and go to page.
Page what?
It doesn't seem to be page numbers.
No, there's not.
Okay. Um, go several pages back to the last page in that tab, or the second, not the last page, sorry.
Second to last page, you said?
It's the. Okay. Tab 14 and two pages back. So, on, you'll see where it has this, this page here that has all this in the bottom. There's a little note right here. It's a little square right, right there and it says, "From Fund 120 in the 2019 budget." And if you look at two pages past that, for the old roadside improvement fund, it says it went to Reserve Fund 310. So, that's how you could see that where those moved. I, I put little tabs when it was a from and I put little tabs when it was a to. Also, on these, um, reserve funds or these funds that I moved, this roadside improvement fund, we have to, uh, bring over an ending fund balance. We have to bring it over as a beginning fund balance. And so, I have to keep that in the fund that it was the year before. So, in, on this page, you'll see that I have a beginning fund balance tree of $25,000 and then I have a transfer out to the 310 fund. So, that moves the funds over to the 310 fund. So, all of that within the budget message when I said that there was a, a large amount, $36,919,000, that was transferring all of these funds dollars to their new fund. So, that's kind of an unusual, it, it, our budget seems to be quite large, but that's an unusual activity that I had to budget for to, um, get those beginning fund balances over to their new funds.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, the overview of, uh, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with governmental fund accounting. Corporate accounting, you have your assets and your liabilities and your fund or your, your equity. In government accounting, the profit and loss, the, um, income for the year does not go into an equity account. It doesn't go onto the balance sheet. The, in the fund accounting, your ending fund balance, your revenues minus your expenditures becomes the next year's revenue. So, it's not the same concept. So, when you see reserved fund balance or committed fund balance or, um, unappropriated fund balance, that's all your beginning fund balances and it's now a revenue in the new year. So, whatever ended with the year before becomes the revenue in the following year. Okay? Um, I mean, I think that's the most unusual thing about fund accounting that's hard to, for people to see. So, what I'd like you to do is, is just, you know, if you, if you just look at these, um, if I go to tab one. The first fund in the general fund is, uh, the Board of Property Tax Appraisals Department in, we call it BAPTA. So, the local, um, local budget law in Oregon says the first column that you have to provide is the second preceding year's actual numbers. So, those are your actual numbers and the first proceeding year, which would be June 30th of 2018, those are your actual numbers. And then it says, "I must show you the current budget." This is the current adopted budget as of the last supplemental budget. So, it has all supplemental budgets, um, one through nine in these numbers. And, um, then I have a proposed column for you. I also am required to give you the FTE that appears on the page before, um, with the FTE that is costed to this account, which is full-time equivalency of a person. So, those, those are the required, um, information that I gave you, two years of actuals, one year prior budget, and the proposed budget for this year. Does anybody have any questions on how to read the budget?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Since everybody's new, uh, the first year, to get the grasp of these three-year comparisons and just kind of lock that in was very beneficial to follow you quick, a little, little faster pace, you know? So, that's, uh, uh, just a good system to get accustomed to.
That is, uh, that was the intent of the local budget laws for you to have the information, history, and, um, the current. Counsel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I, I just wanted to see if I was tracking what you said and using the BAPTA as an example on, um, you know, the, that we're looking at here, the first tab. And these are under the general fund.
Yes.
Accounts?
Yes.
So, did you, and the general fund is money that comes from our property tax revenues. It's unrestricted and it's spending. It doesn't have, is that more or less correct?
Um, yeah, general fund dollars should be unrestricted dollars.
So, then.
Uh, some of them are, some of them that are in here that are, uh, restricted but they're, um, to, to fund those type of activities. Like this one has a CAFSA grant, which is.
Sure.
Restricted monies, but it is to operate the, um, tax appeals board, the treasurer, the, uh, processor. Um, so, those, some of them do have somewhat restricted funds, but they are not, uh, enough funds to carry over. So, they're within the general.
Right. That's what I wanted to talk about was, I think it sounded like you said what you end up with that you haven't spent this year becomes revenue for the next year. But is that automatic or does that, is that a decision the budget committee will make?
No, that's just how fund accounting works.
That's how fund accounting works.
It's the type of, of accounting system that, that governmental entities use as fund accounting rather than corporate accounting, where corporate accounting, if you have a profit and loss statement and you have an income at the end of your year, it, it doesn't go anywhere. It becomes equity in, on the balance sheet. So, you have your assets minus your liabilities would equal your equity in a corporate setting. In government accounting, you don't, you're ending your revenues minus your expenditures doesn't become a balance sheet item. It becomes a revenue in the following year.
Okay.
So, general fund, all of these departments added together, um, that's all. Anything that they have left over at the end of the year is the general fund balance carryover, which is under non-departmental. The budgeted carryover for, um, non-departmental is on the next page on lines 31, 32. And actually, 31, 32, and 33 is the carryover budgeted.
Non-assigned balance fund.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think, I think that helped. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, Louise, um, I, I, did I, did I hear you say on the, on this here, um, you had a FTE line? I don't see that on here.
Okay, so if you look at tab, uh, one.
Okay.
It's the title page, Board of Property Tax Appeals.
Right.
Down at the bottom it says position.
Okay.
And then it has .055. There's not very many FTEs assigned to here.
Yeah, I was looking on this.
Non-departmental doesn't have any, uh, personnel assigned to it. It says it doesn't have an FTE, but elections has 2.395. So, the title page will show your FTEs.
Okay. Thank you. And could I ask you to just take a moment, talk about restricted funds and unrestricted funds and what the county's dealing with since we do have a relatively new panel here?
Okay, so unrestricted funds are basically only general fund. General fund, um, carryover is by definition unrestricted. It cannot be restricted. You can't restrict general funds. Other funds have a restricted balance. It's restricted in some way. If it's a grant, it's restricted by the grantor. If it's, uh, um, sometimes it's restricted by, like, somebody donates money and says, "I only want it spent on this." So, that's restricted. Committed means that the board has committed those funds. It's more formal than a restriction. And I, there's one more and I can't remember what it's called because we don't have any of those. But it's, it's even more formal than the committed. Um, if it's committed funds, it's been taken to the board and had those funds that are, um, committed in some way to what the project that they're in. Most of our funds are restricted outside the general fund, which they, which means that they have some kind of restriction on them. Like cornerstone is, uh, collected with, um.
You talking per the surveyor?
Yeah, the surveyor's funds. Their, their funding comes from some, uh, a portion of the fees that you pay for, I believe it's planning. And it, when, when you pay that fee, a portion of it gets put into the cornerstone and that's restricted to, uh, the surveyor. And, um, so there's other funds that come in like, um, uh, state criminal fines or, um, it's not really a grant, but it comes in from the state and it is restricted to be used as a certain way. And this way, uh, is, um, victim assistance. So, and then there's court security funds. So, there's different funds and they have, the money that comes in is, is restricted to do, spend it in a certain way. That's why those funds are outside the general fund because if those revenues carry over, they have to carry over for the purpose that they were given to that fund for.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any other questions with regard to local budgeting? Doesn't appear that there are, so we're going to move on to the public comments portion unless you had more information.
Um, we, I wanted to kind of go over local budgeting in Oregon. So, this is local budget law. This is in your, um, front pocket also. It's sent out with a packet. What it does is explains what local budget law is. What is, um, what a budget is, who is on a budget committee. And, um, on page two, it, uh, shows the, starts showing you the budget cycle. And number three is, um, approving the budget. And we are currently on number four. The budget committee meets and receives the budget, budget message and the budget document. And here's public comment. So, that's where we are right now. And it also kind of talks about, after that, it talks about what your, um, the committee, um, does. That's what your duties are. And, um, and your final duty would be to approve the budget. So, once you have, um, you have heard all about the budget, discussed the budget, done deliberations on the budget, then, um, you will move to approve the budget and then you will also set the tax rate, which is a permanent rate. So, you don't get a lot of choice on the number you set for that. But, um, we, I will provide a, um, little blurb for you to read to approve the budget because it has to be in the amount of and with that permanent rate and the rate, the amount of the rate. So, when we come to that point, I will pass that to whoever wants to make, move to approve. But, um, anyway, these are your duties. And then, after you're done, um, then I have to advertise the approved budget in the paper as a summary and then the board adopts the budget. And, um, once the budget is adopted, it is, um, a couple of forms are filled out and it goes to the assessor and by the 15th of July so that he can collect the property tax. So, if we don't do this correctly, we don't get property tax. And then the next part of it is, um, just discussing the budget document. And then the next part of it is just discussing the budget document, and budget format that's required. And then it goes on to your property taxes and budgeting. So this is just, this is, comes from the Department of Revenue. It's the little pamphlet that they have that we hand out to budget committee members. There is a much larger one that quotes all the ORSs and all that. If you want to read that one, it's quite a lot of pages. It's also on the Department of Revenue website. And if, if you just put in local budget law Oregon, you will get their website that has all of the handouts. So I provided that for your information.
We had a question over here to my left.
Yes, um, on the research that I've done on the budget laws and stuff, it appears that most counties are doing their budgets earlier in the year, February, March, April. And I've, I've kind of read that we have to have this resolved by June first.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth? Okay.
The Board of Commissioners has to adopt by June thirtieth, so they have to have it resolved in time for the Board of Commissioners to do that, which is usually a two-meeting. So you're, you're pretty close.
Yeah. So I would just make the comment, perhaps we should consider starting earlier in the year, so if we want to come up with some ideas on how to generate more revenue, we can. And-
Um, the, first of all, the budget process is a fine line. We have, we having it too early or too late. Because when you're in the middle of a year, and you start your budget process this meeting in February, you don't even have a half a year of information for your history to start deliberating on what you're going to put in the budget. So I have, I don't know what other counties do, but I've seen, most of the ones that I have seen have their budget meetings in late April or early May. I don't know anybody that has an actual budget meeting like this, right now, in February. They start their budget process as we do, in January or February, but they don't have this meeting until late, until April or May. And also, if you're, if you're generating ideas for revenues that should begin on, on July first, I think even February of that year is a little late to start deliberating on that. So you, that, that's something that should be in place by that time, not starting to discuss it. That's my opinion, though.
Thank you.
Please. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a follow-up question to that. The prior budget committee had sort of, kind of offered up the same idea, ideas for revenues and whatnot. Currently, and I can't speak to any of the details of it, but based on, then they formed a task force of a lot of different people in the community, and recommendations were made to our board about revenue options. One of those revenue options is actually going to be in front of the voters in May, and that's to have a TLT. So Louise, did you do include any of that in here, or not?
No, I did not.
Okay.
And if, if it does come in, the TLT would affect mostly the economic development, I believe, and-
Sheriff.
Sheriff Department. So if those things come in, then, and, and it starts, depending on when it starts, if it starts like July first, we might, if we want to use those funds this year, in the nineteen-twenty, we'd have to do a supplemental budget.
Or we could set some reserves.
Yeah. But to do, to, uh, budget for it before we know what the election results were, and I wouldn't have had those by the time of this meeting, it would have, I, I didn't think it was prudent to include those revenues. Even, even if we do get it, we don't know what the amount is to, to start using it, so.
One more comment or question. And I've done quite a bit of research into this, but it's my understanding that if this passes, we can estimate what that will bring in for next year. And if it doesn't come in in January, we can do a supplemental by state law. Am I off-base here?
Yes, that's what I just said. If we do start getting those revenues and we want to use them in the current year, then we can do that with a supplemental budget. The economic development is outside the general fund, so if those revenues come in and they don't spend them, they will be part of the funds for the following year.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thod, I appreciate your comment, your vision, and I think over a year time, that's something we really need to, we've lost a couple of years, and so when you look at the TLT and the potential there, it's not really going to affect in any large way the work we're doing and have to do here. So, yeah, having that long-term vision, I think, is really important. So, yeah, welcome aboard. Much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
And I'd like to add that, you know, if, if you have any, as you go through the budget, if you have questions, if you email me, I can bring those questions with their answers to our first board meeting next week. And, and if you need, once you've got this budget document, if you're confused about what you're looking at or need to know anymore, I can, I'm available all week for you to come in, and I can go over it more thoroughly with you, so you can read it better and understand what these numbers are. And that goes for the board, too, that was done.
Okey-dokey. Mr. Huddle?
I mean, they've got a lot of new people here.
Yep, thanks, Mr. Chair. And in that spirit, with the new additions to the budget committee, this handout is pretty helpful. I was looking at pages ten and eleven of it, and on pages ten and eleven, on page eleven it talks about, because what, what we're doing here is a public meeting, and then the public meeting laws require notice and discussion when there's a quorum. And the budget committee is a total number of six. So a quorum of that is a simple majority, meaning four. So if, anytime four of you are together, you usually want to do it in a public meeting. On page eleven, it says, "Can I consult with other budget committee members about details of the budget, other than at a budget committee meetings?" My technical legal answer is yes, you can, so long as it's not a quorum of you interspersing ideas. I think also what Louise just said is right there, one subject above on the left column of page eleven, "May I ask questions that, other than a budget committee meeting?" And the answer there is yes. I think, and, and so Louise isn't going through this in great detail today. She's giving it to you with an overview. You're to look at it, and if you, while looking at it, have questions, you can ask each other. I, I would recommend just be very careful with that, but I think you can certainly ask Louise off the record between meetings. And then Louise, isn't it the case that after this introductory meeting, we'll schedule a follow-up meeting that will be the in-depth presentation after they've had a chance to-
Into Monday?
That's the handout in your, also in your front pocket. This is the schedule for the budget committee meeting schedule for next week. So what it shows is on Monday, say, I will do, I will go over the cost allocations, which, I mean governmental services, which is all of our admin costs, and how they got allocated to everybody. I'll go over non-departmental, finance, HR. Director Lang will come in and do juvenile. I'll go over the Title III, unemployment, boroughs, and grants. So this is what, who is scheduled to appear, and what departments are, they're going to do. Some of these run over, sometimes we'll take, um, there's a lot of questions, so maybe we don't get to the VOC office. So that'll move to another day, and, and reschedule as we go, so that we can continue on and, and not have somebody show up and not be able to present, because somebody else is like a half an hour late. These do run on, because there's a lot of questions, and I, I really like that there's a lot of questions, so. I just wanted to point out that on Wednesday, at ten o'clock is the four-H, an extension. That is an entity that's tied to Curry County. This, they have the same board as Curry County, but they don't have the same committee members. So for that meeting, it will be this board and their committee members. And after that is Public Transit, which is Curry County Public Transit Service District. So that committee meeting is the same board and same committee members. So you'll come back as a committee, and it'll be this Curry County Public Transit Service District, not Curry County. And you will look at their budget and approve their budget. It's very small, it's one page. And then after, after that is the compensation committee comes in and does their report. So that's all on Wednesday. So these, these meetings can go on through Friday. Wednesday, you're basically done, and if you're ready to approve, we can approve at that time, and we don't have the rest of the week anymore. So this just depends on how long you want to talk about the budget, how long it takes you to come to agreement to approve the budget, so.
Okay. Commissioner?
Realistically, though, we're going to be pretty busy through Thursday, minimum.
Usually through Thursday, sometimes through Friday. It just depends on, you know, what we have been doing after we heard everybody. We have been going back and, and looking once more at each department, and, and either approving them, or saying what we want to, to do differently on those budgets. And so by the end of the meeting, I do need to be able to, any changes that the committee has made, I have to be able to incorporate and get a final number, dollar for you to approve. Because I have to, you have to approve it in a dollar amount.
Okay. Any further information to review, Ms. Calstrom?
I don't have anything, unless there's more questions.
Commissioner, did you have another question?
Yeah, thank you. With the department heads, managers coming in, sometimes it's tough to, they end up waiting, when we're on a fifty-minute increments, you know, to get them in, and so they're not backed up for the day. I think last year, we did a little better job than that compared to the previous year. But just to give you a little heads-up that that can be an issue, and-
Yeah, and that's why I kind of put like roads or sheriff's departments at the end of the day, so, because those are large conversations, and I don't want somebody sitting there waiting for their turn right after, when it never, never happens.
That's a good call. And I have just one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Council Huddle, so any combination, the six of us here, because we have an even number on this board, you're saying it's not really a good idea to get three of those six members together.
Three would be the absolute max. There's a, here's, there's actually, if I could, just go briefly into a case out of Lane County, and it involved a budget committee, and a court determined that there was a violation of the opens meetings laws. And what happened was, this was done in serial. One committee member would meet with, like, three different committee members, one at a time, but even though they only met with two at a time, they still had four people in a row discussing ideas, and the court said that that was a violation of the meetings law, so.
It should have been, correct?
You know, it, I, I think that's, it's a, it's an acceptable interpretation. I'm just urging you caution. I'm, I'm saying that you can talk to your other committee members, but once you start getting, going down that road, there can be, there can be problems. The best person to talk to would be Louise Calstrom, or we have a director of operations named Julie Schmelzer. She unfortunately couldn't be here today, but she is also a good source of information on the overall organization of the county and the operations. So really, and then I had kind of, Commissioner Boyce, John Jesuit is, and on the minutes and on the other things, it's listed out as we have budget committee members and commissioners. I like to think of, we only have budget committee members in this room. Yep, and that, and that way, for instance, if you two are talking about budget items as budget committee members, you're not talking as, or commission members, and I wouldn't-
It's not a good idea.
I, I, I know. People could, people could see that two different ways. I like to avoid any, any issues like that, so I would, I would just say, do your business here. There's, you know, everybody, there's nothing to, nothing to shy away from, that it's all public, it's going to be a public decision, so really, that's, that's, and that's the recommendation from the Department of Revenue, too.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or information on the overview of the budget document and local budget law?
Did everybody read it? No, kidding.
You know, you know, I did, I did say that Louise Calstrom and Julie Schmelzer are, are resources. The last word Ken DeKay used was law, and I am the lawyer for the county. So if you do have questions about the law, you can certainly come to me.
Don't worry.
Let's line up at his door.
Yeah.
Sounds like there's no further discussion. We do have one request for public comments, so I would ask if Mr. David Barnes is in the audience, please come up and-
We were going to ask, do you have time to fill one out?
Morning, David Barnes. To start, thank you to the three of you for volunteering to serve on this. This is really important work that you're about to get involved with here. I'd just like to make a request. I've come to a lot of these meetings over the last couple of years, and it's kind of difficult, as an audience member, to keep track of what's going on unless you have the book with the numbers in it. And Louise, I don't know how much difficulty it would be for you to print out one more book-
No.
-that may be available, to just sit on the table in case members of the public wanted to share or follow along.
I believe Sina is actually putting that together for the room.
I think she just brought it in, maybe.
She brought one in and gave to Mr. Jesuit. Would that be, that's-
That's the one.
That would be available for, great. That was my comment.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
You ask and you receive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you.
Commissioner, did you have a question for Mr. Barnes, or did you have-
No, I just wanted to recognize former budget committee member Bill Ostrowski, spent two years and was a great contributor, and so I appreciate him also being here today. Thank you.
Sorry, one more question. Louise, you mentioned we have this document published here, and it's printed out for members of the audience who come, the public. Is this also on our website or anything? Is this available for review anywhere else?
It's, as the notice in the paper says, this budget committee, the budget document is now available at the clerk's office, and it is also posted on our website. I asked my staff not to post it until the budget message was read. So once that is read, then it's officially available for the public. And it is, one of these books, like, that you have, is available over at the clerk's office to look at. They will copy it for however much they charge per page of a copy, and they also, is on the website if you want to print it out for yourself.
Thank you. We had another public comment request. Sheriff Ward?
Morning, committee. Sheriff Ward, I want to, I don't know if these are on or off, but you guys probably hear me. Thank you for, you know, spending your time to come here and do this for the county. It takes a lot of time and effort to, and commitment to do this, and for the whole budget committee. I'm not here to ask for anything to be done today. I'm just wanted to point out something that when you go into budget, to keep in mind, with the current Teamsters Agreement, that's pretty public, right?
It's not been ratified, I don't believe. And it's a closed negotiation. Just to remind you.
All right, I won't give what the wage increase would be, but, you know, being that there's a wage increase that's been approved by the commissioners in going into budget committee, it makes a, a bad problem for us called compression. And I'm talking about compression between the representative and the non-representative. For instance, and I'm just going to take an example as a sergeant. With a current increase proposal that, for the union negotiations, the sergeant's going to be at a top step, which is going to be about four hundred dollars more than what the lieutenant would be getting. So in actuality, a sergeant would, is getting, going to get paid more than a lieutenant position, and I can't have that, which also compresses to the captain, which also compresses to me. And I'm not asking for additional. I haven't had anything for about six years or more, since I've been sheriff, so I'm not worried about that. But what I'm worried about is the compression issues. I asked for, I don't think it's bad to say this, but I asked for a nine-point-eight percent increase for non-representative, just to get them above what is going to be for the representative. just to get them above what is going to be for the representative in my budget proposal. But what I understand, this budget doesn't have that in there. It has only maybe a 3% if I'm not mistaken, which still is below... That would still make the sergeant being paid more than lieutenant. So we have to fix that when we get to it. I just wanted to give you that information.
And Sheriff, before you go, can I ask you a question about that? So totally get that if you have a brand-new sergeant starting year one, and they're making more than a lieutenant, that's a problem. But if you've got a sergeant that's got 25 years in, and then you're comparing that to a lieutenant who might be on their first or second year, those situations do occur from time to time. But it usually has to do with the length of service that somebody's been involved.
That doesn't really... Doesn't work with us because all my sergeants are at top step. So if I wanted to promote them to lieutenant, they'd have to take a pay cut. And lieutenants don't get overtime, sergeants do, and with the amount of overtime that they get, they're getting paid probably more than I am. So what I want to do is I want to try to take the sergeant and move him up to lieutenant, compress their salaries a little bit so they're not getting overtime. They don't get their HIRIBA money that's been budgeted in for... And then the insurance rates. And we can go on the insurance rates, too, but...
I have a question, too. Does the Compensation Board set the... Or make recommendations on what the non-representative pay raises are?
Only elected.
Okay, only elected. So how do we... Who presents the hypothetical 9.8? Do you...
I proposed it, but apparently it wasn't put in the... Well, it was in the budget, my proposal, but now it's not. It's down to a 3%, which doesn't... Still doesn't work.
And that can be deliberation of the committee when we get to where we're talking about nonrepresented salaries.
Sheriff, do you know the total number of positions affected by that?
In my department? Four. Four or five.
Okay. This is a big issue. I came from the government sector 16 years ago retired. It's always been an issue in the sector when a bag-carrying agent makes more than a supervisor. And what we observe through the system, and I'm not trying to compare federal with local, we often ended up with supervisors that would do this, and they weren't dedicated to the job. So we would often say there was a difference between ability and mobility. So I think it is an important issue. So if you want to retain good people, but, you know, maybe this is premature to bring this up, but it is an issue, and I agree with the sheriff.
And I'm not... In my experience as a law enforcement officer, I'm not aware of any agency where a sergeant makes more than a lieutenant, or a lieutenant makes more than a captain. There's a chain of command in place for a reason, and they're compensated appropriately for their position within the agency. And that... Those types of issues have a very long-lasting effect all the way down the line when it comes to retaining employees, recruiting employees, and overall morale in the agency as well. And those are all factors to be considered, and I think it is a really important issue to deal with probably right away. So just a quick comment on that is, I really think this is a policy issue and not a budget issue. This committee is here to, you know, to look at what the budget is and what the recommendations are from the county, but it sounds like you have a policy issue here, where a policy needs to be established that there is a gap between these folks, and that's something that the county should be able to do. It does have a budget impact, but I think a policy needs to be addressed first. Mr. Huddle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think a decent summary of what you're talking about is found on page 11 of the materials at the bottom. It's, "Can the Budget Committee add or delete programs or services through funding?" And it kind of says exactly what you just said. The whole group can decide, but ultimately, that's the other idea. You all will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, who will ultimately decide the ultimate policy questions. But you can consider those and recommend them when the time comes.
Okay.
And one other thing I'd like to address real quick. Insurance caps for elects. Getting back to a little bit, when you talk about the elected Compensation Board, they've always made recommendations, and it's always been a little higher than what it actually is, but in my past experience, since I've been here, the Commission have never accepted that. They've always says, "Oh, we don't have the money," and it's back down to where it was. So there's been really no pay raises, other than a few of the elected officials. Last year, I got, I think, a $2,000 stipend, which I didn't see as an elected official. But my issue is the insurance cap. When you have an insurance cap of like $1,350 for a union negotiator and union representatives, and then the nonrepresentatives get a little bit less than that, but then the elected officials are on the bottom end of a... You know, I'm paying like maybe a little over $300 out of my check for insurance when my employees don't. That also affects the compression issues. So that's something I think needs to be looked at.
Sheriff Ward?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Next, we had announcements, but I would feel kind of out of place going through those But I'll process them anyway.
So I'll do that. Once again, we kind of went over the budget meeting schedule, which is the same thing as the announcements. So Monday, May 13th, is Budget Committee starts at 10:00. And this column here is the Monday schedule for that. May 14th, 2019, the Budget Committee starts at 10:00, and there's a schedule for the Tuesday. Wednesday, May 15th, which is my granddaughter Iris's birthday, is the... It says the Budget Committee starts at 10:00. Public hearings is the 4H, an Extension Service Budget Committee, and they start at 10:00. And then the Curry County Public Transit Service District starts at 10:30, and that's a hearing. And a... Both of those are extremely short budgets. You will have time to discuss those budgets, and in the case of the Transit District, do your approval. 10 minutes. I mean, there's very, very small budgets. And the other committee will discuss that budget and probably approve that. There's not going to be a lot of four- or five-day discussion on those one-page budgets. Then May 16th, the Budget Committee meeting, that's on Thursday, begins at 10:00. And May 17th, if needed, begins at 10:00. And also, May 21st is reserved, if needed, to go, starting at 10:00. And if you need the 22nd during that day, if you think they're going to go another day, then we would announce at that meeting that we will have another meeting the following day. These meetings go on until you approve the budget. So you, you know, the schedule is 10 to 5:00. If you're discussing at 5:00 and you want to continue with the Sheriff's Department, the Budget Committee can continue to discuss the budget longer than an 8 to 5 also. I've had meetings that started at 5:00 in the evening and continued until 2:00 in the morning. So that's the way Budget Committees go.
Not this guy.
Sorry, John... Mr. Chair, John Jesuit pointed something out to me. On this document here, at the bottom of the announcements, it says, "May 21st if needed."
Oh, and that should be May 22nd.
Is it 22nd? Because this has... Here, looking at the calendar, May 20th is Monday, 21st is Tuesday.
Yeah, so this, I believe, should say...
Is it Monday?
Yeah, it's Monday.
On this one, at the end of your Friday, it says, "May 20th if needed." So down here, it should be the 20th.
Yeah.
Okay. So... And... But by the way, would it be the 21st if needed, the 22nd if needed, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah. In Budget Committee meetings, they can announce at the next meeting at the meeting. So like if you're meeting on Monday and you say, "We will continue to meet," you can set the date for the next day if you want to. I don't know if you want to, but in the past couple of years, they've gone through Wednesday, actually. So it'd be a week and a half. But depends on how detailed the committee is or how... What they're looking at in the budget.
Thank you. Commissioner, did you have a question?
Thank you. As we're winding down here, I want to go back... First of all, this is very well organized, which I appreciate. I want to go back to the budget message, bottom of first page, when we talk about... You mentioned the general fund, the proposed budget. It's basically going up from $8 million to almost $11 million. So that's a $3 million raise. I just want to, you know, not today necessarily, but I assume we're going to spend individually on each of these reasons at some point during the whole process. Because to be able to talk to the people, and I mean, when the average citizen hears a $3 million raise, I mean, they're going to want to know why, and so I want to be as prepared as I possibly can be. I'm not pointing a finger or necessarily...
No, the... In the budget message, it does talk about the PERS rate, talks about salary, negotiated salary increases, and then there are transfers out to other funds to support those other funds. And there's... If you want to look at the history of the Planning Department budget, you'll see that there's quite an increase in that one because of reorganization. So there are... If you look through the budget, look through it, get your questions of why those increases happened in the general fund, and we'll talk about them next week.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Wolf?
While we're talking about the budget message, I just wanted a point of clarification here. When we're talking about $1.184 million going from the road fund, I think it's important for the public to know that a big portion of that is for towers. Correct?
No, it is not. It's for the Sheriff's Department.
$1.184? Oh, okay.
I mean, it's budgeted for next year. So...
Part of it came from last year.
Well, there's the three...
But wasn't used.
This year was budgeted $480, I think. So next year is going to be budgeted at $1.84.
Okay.
And there's increases in the staffing in the Sheriff's Department. So that's a deliberation for the committee of what they want to do with that.
Any further questions? Any closing comments from anyone? Hearing none, I would call for an adjournment.
Oh, you've been waiting all day for that, haven't you?
I was going to give a 10 this one.
Might need that today.
Thank you all.
So, nice to meet you.
Sorry I was late, guys. I had a client pass away.